Everyone, thank you for being here tonight at home and in City Hall. I would like to call to order our City of Fairview Board of Commissioners' regular meeting agenda, June 5th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. First item, second item, roll call. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Present.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Item number three is prayer and pledge. Lord, I would like to thank you for this community and all those who live here. I would like to just ask for you to be with each and every one of us, keep us safe. And those who are sick, please provide them just the care to get well. I pray tonight for our agenda and that you guide us through this agenda to do the best for our community, as we would love to do, to make sure that our citizens know that we care about them. In Jesus's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight and thank all of you at home. We love it when we have a full house and like to hear from you. So if you'd like to speak during citizens' comments, we enjoy hearing from our community. Also, everyone who's speaking, please speak loudly and clearly into your mics so that the people at home can hear. And we want to thank our officers here for watching after us and keeping each of us safe. Please, if you are speaking, be polite and courteous. Thank you. Item number five is approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number five passes 5-0.
Item number six is citizens' comments.
There are none tonight, Mayor.
Item number seven is public announcements, awards and recognition, city events. Mr. Ross?
Good evening, Mayor Board. Just a reminder that this Saturday, we have a fishing rodeo at Veterans Park. It's going to be from 6:00 AM until noon. Registration starts at 6:00 and then fishing will get underway shortly after. We'll be providing lunch to everyone, to the kids and to the parents, grandparents and whoever is attending, and there will be prizes as well. And just a reminder that we have July 3rd coming up. We're exactly four weeks away. We have a total of 29 sponsors this year and we're completely full on vendor sponsors and we've had to turn some sponsors away unfortunately just because of printing deadlines for shirts and banners and everything. I just want to give recognition to three of our main sponsors this year because without them and of course our other sponsors, the event could not go on. And those are Apex Bank, Stern Property Partners and Ben's Bitcoin. Without them, it's hard to put the show on. And the event starts at 3:30 PM and goes until 9:30, 9:45. The fireworks will begin at 9:30. We recommend everyone showing up early for giveaways and everything that involves with that, plus parking for surrounding areas as well. Handicap parking will be at Canos and they will be handling that as well. We'll have cooling stations and stuff like that this year for anyone that's getting hot. And we'll have several misting fans that will be at the event. And then there will be a misting tent near First Bank as well. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ross?
Everyone, Mr. Ross is, just for clarification, the fishing rodeo does not require any licenses for the kids or anything like that?
That's correct. It's not required.
Just noted that people who don't have a license don't have to worry. You can still come. They can participate.
I have one question.
Okay, I think, are you talking about mics?
For all ages.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Is that that location specifically or citywide or?
Statewide.
Yeah.
Statewide, fish it up on Saturday. Do not need a license to do so.
Okay, so yeah, this Saturday. That's good. Thank you. Item number nine, consent agenda. A, minutes from May 13th, 2025, Board of Commissioner work session. B, minutes from May 15th, 2025, Board of Commissioner work session. And C, minutes from May 15th, 2025, Board of Commissioner regular meeting. Yeah, I'm gonna have to have my light. Pardon me for a minute. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now. Okay, item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Not a lot to report tonight. We're getting busy trying to close out fiscal year '25. Looking forward to fiscal year '26. I did want to remind everyone that the second meeting for June has been rescheduled to Tuesday, June 17th. So because of the holiday on Thursday, it's June 19th. Wanted to make sure that didn't sneak up on anybody. Thank you.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay. Item number nine, consent agenda. A, minutes from May 13th, 2025, Board of Commissioner work session. B, minutes from May 15th, 2025, Board of Commissioner work session. C, minutes from May 15th, 2025, Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor, Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item nine passes 5-0. Item 10, old business, 10A, annexation 7330, Taylor Road. I will now open the public hearing. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. A2, Resolution 2025, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owner and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee with RS40, single-family residential zoning. Map 042, parcel 077.06, 7330, Taylor Road, 3.24 plus or minus acres. Owner Sheila Taylor. Mr. Greer?
Ms. Taylor submitted to have her property annexed into the City of Fairview. She's expressed an interest in subdividing this futurely for her children to have homesites. The planning commission sent this to the board with a positive recommendation and this passed the first reading with a 5 to 0 vote from the Board of Commissioners.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Questions from the board? And we do have a representative for that property. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10A passes 5-0. Item 10B, rezoning 7391, Crowcut Road. I will now open the public hearing. Seeing no one to speak, I will close the public hearing. Item B2, second and final reading, ordinance 2025-04, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning a 19.96 plus or minus acre parcel located at 7391 Crowcut Road, consisting of Williamson County tax map 046, parcel 016.03, from RS40, single-family residential, to R20, one and two-family residential. Property owner Carla Langford. Mr. Greer?
This property was submitted by SEC for a rezoning to R20, which would match the adjacent parcels, which are Aiden Woods. The 19.96 acre parcel, they're hoping to get some half-acre lots on this parcel. It passed to the planning commission with a positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners and at the first read of the Board of Commission, it received four yes votes and one no vote. And there is a representative tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini?
Nay.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10B passes 4-1. Item 10C, rezoning Horn Tavern Road. I will now open the public hearing. Seeing no one to speak, I will close the public hearing. Item C2, 10C2, second and final reading, ordinance 2025-05, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning a .56 plus or minus acre parcel located on Horn Tavern Road northwest of Clay Caldwell Lane, consisting of Williamson County tax map 022, parcel 143.01, from RS40, single-family residential, to R20, one and two-family residential. Property owner Philip Caldwell. Mr. Greer?
This property currently is non-conforming to the RS40 regulations due to it being only .56 acres. The request for R20 would make this property a conforming property. It came from the planning commission with a positive recommendation for approval and at the first read at the Board of Commissioners, it received five yeses, zero nos.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Are there any questions? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10C passes 5-0. Item 10D, rezoning Crowcut Road. I will now open the public hearing. Seeing no one here to speak, I will close the public hearing. Item 10D2, second and final reading, ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning a 28.75 plus or minus acre parcel located on Crowcut Road, consisting of Williamson County tax map 018, parcel 031.00, from RS40, single-family residential, to RS15, single-family residential. Property owner North Cut Custom Homes LLC. Mr. Greer?
This property is requesting a rezone to RS15. It is a newly annexed property, so it came in as RS40. With the annexation request, RS15 was the request by the applicant. You are now seeing this because we annexed this in at the last meeting. The 2040 comprehensive plan shows this parcel as a high-density parcel. Shows RM20, multifamily 20 units per acre, RM12, 12 units per acre, RM8, 8 units per acre, RS8, 8,000 square foot lots, and RS5, 5,000 square foot lots as appropriate for this parcel. The request for RS15 is less dense than the intended use in the 2040 comprehensive plan. This came to the Board of Commissioners with a planning commission positive recommendation for approval and at the first read at the Board of Commissioners, received four yes votes, one no vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any questions from the board?
Yes, I have questions.
Do we have a representative for this project?
Well, my question's actually for Mr. Greer, so can you just describe the topography of this property, please?
The topography of this property, I have not actually walked this property. I've only looked at it from satellite view and visuals have been presented to me. It's kind of a rolling hills property. There are no deep trenches, but there are, it's rolling hills of middle Tennessee. There definitely is some topographical challenges. It's not a perfectly flat piece of property, but it is definitely not the worst property in Fairview to build homes.
Are there any natural bodies of water?
Not that are known.
Are there any man-made bodies of water?
Not that are known.
How many units would potentially go on this parcel if it's zoned in as RS15?
Approximately.
Are you here to represent the project?
Mr. Van Dross, do you want to come on up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
To answer your question, Commissioner, approximately 75 units.
About 75.
Would be the theoretical density at 15,000 square foot lots and 28 acres.
Would that require a traffic study?
That would not require a traffic study. The traffic study threshold is 100 units.
Could we, could a traffic study still be done even if not required?
It could be. Our regulation is written and it states, as if in the opinion of the city engineer, is the nomenclature that's used for, if the traffic study is not warranted based on the other items, the city engineer could order a traffic study to be completed.
Yeah, Mr. Mangram's coming in right now. We're talking about you.
Sorry.
Mr. Mangram, if you'd like to speak to the topography of this site, Commissioner Roberts did ask what the topography of this site.
For Fairview, it's great.
Hold on one second. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tim Mangram, 7326 Fern Railroad, Fairview. The topography of this is actually really good. There is a slight, I won't say every, for lack of a better term, I say ravine, but it's, it's not a ravine by any means. That is in that, the upper sections of woods that you see, it's actually pine trees, pine thicket. But it's, it's a very small depression.
What we were talking about when you came in, I was asking Mr. Greer if a traffic study would be required and he said no because this would have about 75 units on it and the threshold is about 100.
The theoretical density is 75 units. I know that you have a, you have a difference of what you would like to actually do from your conceptual, but that's the theoretical density.
That's correct. Yeah, we won't, we won't get to 75. We have no intent of doing that.
So when we spoke at the last meeting, I said to you, it's like kudzu when you put a new higher density in a place where it's only lower density. And one of the things that is important to me, sitting up here, is that we be very thoughtful about where we go higher density in Fairview. And I've had conversations since that last meeting and I think it makes more sense to go higher density closer to the interstate than closer to the center of the city. And I know what the 2040 plan said. And the reason why I'm saying all of this is because I think it's important for people who are listening to understand the thought process that goes into this and that there is a lot of consideration. And, and I, I think it's best that this is a flatter parcel than a very hilly parcel. And that even with the threshold of being 75, you said you wouldn't plan to go up to 75 units.
No.
Thank you.
Now, because we do intend, even though it's R15 is, is the zoning we're shooting for, we do intend to do probably 25 of those lots of 20,000 foot or so, just to give a, even though it's a smaller neighborhood, it, it gives some different options for lot sizes for the, for the end user.
We talked before about clear cutting and you said that there weren't any large established trees. Would you think that you would leave some green space on here? Even if you had to remove trees? I mean, would there conceptually be some left?
Yes, there will be some. I don't know how much. There is those, the two sections that looks like trees on there now is actually lob lolly pines. The rest of that is covered in trees, but as far as, as marketable timber trees, there, there's very few. It's, it's just grown up over the years and just full of saplings. And it, don't get me wrong, there are some big trees on there, but there, there's not very many of them.
Thank you.
Mayor, for me, just to add to it, and for those watching at home, for those in the audience, it may look like we're just pushing all of these through. This is the second reading on all these items. We've had discussion at the first reading and the planning commission as well. If you'd like to see additional discussion on it, there was some back on those meetings. Mr. Greer, just the 2040 plan being our guiding light and you talked about the appropriate zonings that are listed in the 2040 plan for this property. RM20, I believe, was the densest of the listed approved recommended zonings on this property. So just for, I guess, just for those to consider or think about, if theoretically RM20 would be appropriate for this property, that would be close to 600 units, if my math is correct. So I think it's just to be noted that this is, yes, a development, but much less dense and much fewer units than what could be.
And a single-family product.
And a single-family product versus a multifamily, correct.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mangram, have you got any commitment on the sewer possibilities?
Yes, we do, with Michael Rogers at the Water Authority. We do, we have, we have a will serve letter for this site.
Okay, so it'd be conventional sewer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I spoke with Mr. Vaden Northcut earlier today and one thing for me is, I think, you know, we've approved a lot of townhomes recently and I'm encouraged because this is a single-family home development. I don't see 75 as very large. We have probably many, many more that are much larger than that. I do, like other developments, when it possibly is R40 and they ask for R20, it's mainly because there's some lots that just because of topography or something else, can't meet that, in this case, R20. So basically, even if you're gonna have many lots that are R20, if there are any at all, that fall less than that R20, you have to ask for the R15 or it won't work. So I've reviewed this and spoke with Mr. Northcut. I believe that, you know, being a single-family home development with only, what are you saying, maybe 60?
If we even get to that, but it's, we're probably gonna be less than 60.
Between 50 and 60, single-family homes. I, I'm encouraged by that. So that's just, those are my comments.
That's a good point, Mayor. And if I could, Mr. Mangram, you've spoke to it in the past, I believe, on the expected lot size on this property, the majority of them are not going to be right at that R15 standard. They will be larger, correct?
We're wanting to do at least 25 of those at, at 20,000 feet or better, just to give options. Because some people don't care really if it's 15,000 feet or 20,000 feet as far as the homeowner. But if we have both options, then that gives them, in a, in a custom home setting, if they're picking out their lot in their house, that gives them options for two different-sized lots.
Any other comments? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10D passes 5-0. Item 10E, Booby Meadows, major modification. I will now open the public hearing. Seeing no one to speak, I will close the public hearing. Item ten E two, second and final reading, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by approving the major modification of phase two of the Bowie Meadows Planned Overlay Development District with a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-nine residential units on ninety-nine point seven-four plus or minus acres of property consisting of map zero four two, part of parcel zero two six point zero zero and map zero four two three E, Group A, parcel zero zero six point zero zero. Applicant Eric McNeely, McNeely Engineering LLC. Property owner, Lennar Homes of Tennessee LLC. Mr. Greer.
Lennar Homes has submitted a revision. And this has come in as a major modification due to adjusting the primary points of ingress and egress of the subdivision. Their revision is on Plan North. They had a access on Wayne's Lane that has now been pulled back. That original access point was there due to the original approval and not having city center fully fleshed out with those points of connection. At this point, city center, uh, phase two has been fleshed out and they have two points of connection going into city center phase two, which gives them all of the life, fire and life safety access points that they need for their development. And so the Wayne's Lane access point created quite a bit of challenges with how Wayne's Lane and Cox Pike intersect. And looking at that definitely has some safety issues for future use there. And so working with Lennar, uh, they suggested to pull back that entrance point and create a cul-de-sac there. During this time, they also added multiple detention ponds within the development. As the engineering has gotten a little bit more construction level detail, they've been able to identify a few areas that they felt needed to have better detention of, uh, water runoff. Tonight, the only item that is driving this to be a major modification is the point of ingress and egress that originally was the connection point to Wayne's Lane that is being removed. It passed the planning commission with a positive recommendation to the board. At the first read with the board of commissioners, it received five yeses, zero nos. There is a representative tonight to answer any questions.
Will the representative please come forward?
Mayor, if I may, there's not many times that we send out a public notification to all of the adjacent neighbors and hear many positive comments. But I have heard two folks that have come into my office in the last couple of weeks that were both, uh, that lived on Wayne's Lane, who were both in favor of this entrance being removed. It's not very often that we get told, thank you for doing this, but a couple of those folks that live over there were very appreciative.
Eric McNeely, McNeely Civil Engineering.
Thank you. Yes. Motion to approve.
Second.
After having a motion for approval and a second, do we have any questions from the board? I'd like to say that I too, um, during this whole process, heard from many residents on Wayne's Lane and they were very appreciative of the fact that that was removed as an ingress egress and it just wasn't a really good point of access. Also, the additional detention ponds to catch water that is, um, you know, going to protect our Bowie Nature Park is appreciated.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to confirm that, uh, I am in favor of the additional detention ponds as well as the Wayne's Lane being removed. I think that makes a lot of sense. Hoping that the detention ponds will help the, all the sites up there. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
And I, I feel like this might be the third time it's said, but I want to draw it out very explicitly. Will the addition, will the addition of those detention ponds help with the water runoff into the park? When will those be in place?
Get a grading permit. Um, we've, we've got construction plans submitted for phase two to staff and they are currently under review.
And is there anything that will, um, change any of the water runoff that's going down into Cox Run?
Uh, we, we have taken, uh, the planning commission's concern and, um, what we've discussed with staff, uh, with the city engineer was, um, putting in, um, some, some modifications when the binder goes down that would ensure water gets to those inlets, uh, and alleviate that water. And when the, when the road gets final topped, it, you're not going to have any bypass and according to the drainage calculations that were submitted.
And do you have a time estimate on that?
Do you, do you have a time? Uh, next couple of weeks. I was out there, uh, this afternoon and they had strung curb and had the first lift of stone down, so it's going to happen in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Mayor?
Yes.
So all, all the sewers are now connected?
To my knowledge, they are currently, uh, working on, um, the decentralized sewer system onsite.
Okay. I, I appreciate what you guys are trying to do with the retention ponds. I don't think it's going to help the citizens that are experiencing some flooding issues right now and the damages to their homes. But I, I do appreciate the extra store, water storage that you guys are putting part of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Greer, I would just, what was the date of the planning commission meeting where he was? Do you have that handy? Just for, for those here and at home, there was a good amount of discussion regarding these changes at the planning commission. If anyone is interested in having more understanding of what was discussed, you did a great job of presenting that night. I think it would be beneficial for those to listen that might have concerns.
I, I remember the date because it's my anniversary and I had to come to the, but it's, uh, April twenty-second.
April twenty-second. There you go. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item ten E passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten F, fiscal year twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six budget. I will now open the public hearing. Seeing none to speak, I will close the public hearing. Item ten F two, second and final reading, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. City manager, Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Uh, the document you have here has two, only two changes from the first read. At, uh, Placer AI has been taken out of the administration budget and there has been a, um, a crew member added to the, um, Public Works, uh, budget. So other than that, everything else is exactly the same.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions from the board?
Yes, Mayor. No, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to say to Mr. Dougherty, thank you. I think it was a good discussion regarding all of the departments through the process of going through this budget this year. And I'm happy to see that Public Works is getting an additional as, through that conversation, it was obvious that they, they need help as, as do all departments. But I think they'll feel it the most with their, being the smallest department, I believe, right? They, uh, they'll, it'll be, the impact will be great for them and I'm encouraged by it. So thank you for that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Dougherty, I, I'm just curious, where did we get, find the funds from? Like where did we pull majority of those funds from?
We had a eighty-eight thousand dollar surplus starting out. Uh, we had the fifteen thousand coming out of, uh, the Placer AI. So we're still in, in a, a surplus of about fifty to sixty thousand dollars with the, with the new employee.
So we didn't necessarily cut out anything other than the Placer AI?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I actually have something that I want to discuss about the budget. Looking at personnel and looking at staffing and thinking about what happened a couple of weeks ago when, um, when we had that rainfall and, um, and thinking about the needs of the city. So, um, there's a, a proposal that I would like to make and it would be an amendment to this budget. One of the, the things that stands out to me right now is that we have a very small planning and codes department. And they are often called out for, um, maybe perhaps not responding. So, um, and I think it's because they're always being contacted and, and that's great that people are contacting them. But I know I'll sit in Mr. Greer's office. I've heard other members of the board say that they visit Mr. Greer regularly. Uh, city members, they go, they see him all the time. Uh, people are calling all the time and visiting and he's going out and doing visits out in the, in the community. And he's out there also, um, with the rest of his staff. But I, I think they are being stretched very thin. And I think that's the fastest, most surefire way to burn out a department. And so I'd like to propose something that might give them another position also. And, um, and I certainly want to hear from the rest of the board what they think of this. About fifteen months ago, I understand there was a, the new position for the economic development officer was brought in. And that salary carries with it. Um, it's a six-figure salary and there's a city vehicle. And I think there are probably some other costs associated with it, like registrations, insurance on the vehicle. And what I, what I've asked for in past meetings and what I have yet to receive is something that shows a return on that investment of taxpayer dollars. And this is not about a person or, um, a faulty plan. It's that I think we know what we need when we get to where we are. And there has not been a return on that investment in the economic development position that I can discern. So I looked at the budget and I thought about what might make sense. Because, and I do appreciate so much you finding this position for, uh, Public Works. And that I asked for it, you delivered it, it's beautiful and I appreciate it. And I hope that, that they can use that position well because that's another department I'm concerned about overworking. But, and I want to say, nobody's asked me for anything. I, I am not sitting up here because someone asked me for something, but I've looked at what we need and I've looked at what I think is responsible for our city. So I want to propose that we change the economic development officer position. And I think it would make sense to have a part-time grants writer position and bring in another position, um, such as an assistant planner for the planning and codes department. So I did a little bit of, of research to help with the math and think about what the vision is on this. Just on salary alone, I don't know what the car costs. I don't know what, if we're paying for gas, I don't know what insurance costs. So just on salary alone, if we take the hundred eighteen thousand that's budgeted for this year for the economic development officer and we were to offer a position for an assistant planner off of the chart that you gave us, I'm rounding up a smidge, but that would be on the starting salary, so a new planner coming in, seventy-two thousand dollars a year. So then taking the math out of that, you take the seventy-two out of the one eighteen, that leaves forty-six thousand. For a part-time grant writer, that might actually be a fair salary. I don't know. I didn't look up that salary. But if it's a little high, then we could take that and spread it out, maybe offer a little bit more than forty-three thousand to our new Public Works person because that's a very small amount of money perhaps. Depending on who the, the person is that's hired into that role, they might, could use a little extra. And we might look at other folks who haven't received a substantial raise in a while. But I wanted to bring this up for conversation to the board because I think it's very important that we're good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and that we see something coming back for the amount of money that we're paying a person. And I can tell you that it would be very, very discernible and easy to see another planner in the planning and codes department and what they could do to help. There are currently nineteen developments being built in Fairview. There are nineteen developments being built in Fairview and we have one city planner. We have engineering firm, but they're not here all the time. We've got our, um, our codes and our, um, inspector. And then we've got our person doing permits and we've got our front person answering the phones. And I think that we need another person. I think that we need help with all of the development that's going on more than we need to think about how we might build out an economic development position. And we need somebody writing grants. So a cursory search showed me that there are federal grants available for stormwater. Now, I could say enough to just maybe show that I haven't done full research. But if we had a person looking for grants that might help with some of the things that are happening where there's no other resource to fix it, there's nobody responsible for what's happening. But we could take a person who's got good experience and, and a good heart for the city and pour it into writing grants that are very targeted and fit the vision and mission of this city, then we would see some really great results with a very focused role on writing those grants. That's my proposal and I would like to know, very much would like to know what the rest of the board thinks.
Mr. Greer, do you feel like you're spread thin with the people you have from Griggs and Maloney working with you?
Feel like we utilize our resources to the fullest extent.
Do you feel like you need another staff member to assist you as an assistant city planner?
It would be beneficial, I believe, to have an additional staff member, um, to assist.
In the capacity of assistant city planner?
In the capacity of assistant city planner, yes. I believe that would be beneficial.
Does our, um, new zoning ordinance state that we need an economic development officer?
New zoning ordinance?
Or one of the ordinances that I've been told about the requirement?
The new zoning ordinance has no requirement for an economic development officer.
Tell me which one it is.
The 2040 comprehensive plan has a goal of hiring a economic development officer for economic development goals.
Mr. Greer, I have a question for you. Mayor, if you are done.
Yes.
As we go through the process of zoning overhaul and coming up with the new ordinances and all that, my understanding by talking to some of the, um, professionals around town that are going to be living in that document, um, outside of city employees, but just people that are going to have to adhere to it and, and use it, their, um, mindset on it is it's going to put additional strain on our planning department just due to the fact of how.
That's correct. Due to the rigorous amount of regulations that exist in that document. Due to the rigorous amount of regulations that exist in that document, it would take longer to review and get everything correct.
I think there is something to be said that we do have a lot of development going on right now and when you are limited, no fault of your own, just it's hard for one individual to meet the needs that are being asked of you or asked of your department right now. Things can be missed, things could be overlooked on, not by intention, but just due to the pressing need and demand that the department is being faced with. So I think there's an argument to be made that strengthening our planning department is planning for the future to prevent future runoff issues and stormwater issues by ensuring that those plans are being reviewed properly, giving the attention and the time that they deserve and that the city deserves to make sure that the product that we're putting on the ground lives up to the new regulations that we have gone for some time now developing. You know, we can have the greatest regulations in the world, flawless even, for hypothetically, but if they're not being properly reviewed, properly enforced, then it's worthless, it's moot at that point. So I think it's a fair conversation that the planning department, I mean, it is a very important department that the city has, especially right now where we're facing more development than we've ever had at any point in time in the city's history, so, yeah.
I will note that during our budget conversations, my conversations with Mr. Doherty, we did discuss additional positions. The revenues have not justified having additional positions at this point, but we've looked at an amended budget stage in, we usually do that around December. We were looking to potentially propose an additional person at that point, I believe.
Mayor? Well, to come off of what you just said, as far as the revenue not justifying, not being able to help pay for another planner, it's not really helping pay for the economic development position either. In fact, you'd get more money out of an additional planner revenue-wise, be able to do things more efficiently. So, it's worth a conversation.
Me personally, I think economic development is crucial. There's not one city in Williamson County that doesn't have an economic development-type person, officer, position, or department. That person or department oversees who's coming into our community and looks for the best possible opportunities for who develops here, medical facilities who come, different businesses who come. I don't think that the planning department really, you know, does that type of recruitment and I just want to see our city get the best opportunities and the best, you know, healthcare facilities. I know that there are some that have been looking our direction, businesses. I just, I don't know, I don't know how I feel about it. I just feel like with us giving up that department, we would be, you know, behind other cities who actually see that as a very important role to bringing the best opportunities to their community.
Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of responses to that. From what I understand, Williamson, Inc. can provide some services that are akin to what our Economic Development Officer position is and that would be at no cost to Fairview. Another thing in just a little bit of research that I did, the average annual salary for an Economic Development Officer in Tennessee is $83,551. The Nashville Economic Development Officer, so Metro Nashville, is $99,470. So even assuming we are doing the right thing by having a whole department devoted to economic development, we're still higher than the largest city near to us with a salary. And, and again, to my previous point, I wouldn't have even thought of this if we were seeing returns on the investment, if I saw a report that demonstrated a plan, that demonstrated what our needs are, where we're failing, where we're succeeding, where we need to go. And so I'm not saying it's not important, I think economic development is incredibly important. I think everyone in this room would raise their hand if I asked them and said, "Do you think it's important?" Of course they do, we all do. But immediately, right now, right now, what we need with 19 developments going on and I don't know how many more permits getting ready to pull, we need help for this Planning and Codes Department. And again, Mr. Greer didn't have to say a single word to me about it. I've been listening and I've been paying attention and I can see what is needed. From my perspective, that's what's needed right now. And I did not suggest cutting a position altogether, but I think a part-time position, based off of the information provided by our Economic Development Officer when she did have the opportunity to give us a presentation, would be more than enough hours considering half of the hours of a 40-hour-per-week job weren't accounted for in the presentation that was provided. I think if we started with a part-time position, especially focusing on grant writing to help get money for things that we can't pay for out of our city budget, but we desperately need, such as stormwater maintenance and improvements offered by the federal government, then that would help us get to the point where we would be able to perhaps look at somebody who would come in and do something like an Economic Development Officer does. But I sure would like to see somebody making steps toward developing a plan for that and get there before we hire a position and get locked into a salary and a car and all the other costs associated with it. So I'm not saying for it to go away completely because I think we have a need, but we have a very specific need. And that can build again, but right now, we have a massive need in planning and codes. And with this new ordinance coming in, my goodness, we've got our hands full already and we all know, we're busy, you take on one more thing and you're buried. And, and I just, I really want to make sure we're doing what's right for the city. And to me, this is just what stood out and I've thought about it and I've thought about it and I sat down and I reworked it and I've done a lot of research. And it's completely impartial to humans and any individual person, it's just about looking at what the city needs. I think that Vice Mayor McDonald made a very good point about what's still coming down the pike and we have a lot more and it's coming at us fast and we need some help. And I would really like to support this department and the professional development of everybody in it. And when they're spinning their wheels too fast, they can't focus on things like professional development and continuing to learn and grow in their role because they're just chasing one detention pond and fallen tree after another. I really think they need that support and they will work those 40 hours, we all know it, they'd fill that time.
Mayor?
Yes.
Am I allowed to ask the city manager for his opinion on this or is that not?
You can ask anything you'd like, as long as we're in a public forum.
Well, we are, so...
Yep.
To our city manager who manages our city, what is your opinion on having or eliminating the economic development position that is in the 2040 Plan, which gives us another, what, 16, 17 years, 15 years to hire someone in that position? What's your opinion on eliminating that position to make another two departments better? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Is that all of your question?
Just now.
Yes, ma'am. I would like the opportunity to see this position, be able to show a substantial amount of worth. There's a few exciting things going on that I would hate to pull the rug right out from under, but, you know, the board holds the purse strings. You know, I think I have estimated revenue very conservatively. I believe we're gonna have substantially more than what is on paper as far as a surplus. I would like to give this position at a minimum 12 months and be able to prove to you guys the worth of this position. And if we can't, I'm willing to entertain that proposal. I'm also willing to put, we've got a substantial fund balance. We could take a small hit in fund balance and be fine. One of the main reasons I like having a strong cash position is once we get into the grant business, you've got money to cash flow, you've got, you know, you can, you can take advantage of opportunities. I would like, instead of knee-jerking something right now, I'd like to give it just a little more time to be able to prove and substantiate what I feel is the right move for the city. If, like I said, you guys hold the purse strings, I think I could put those other two positions in, we might have a little bit of a deficit, but we've got fund balances is very, very healthy. In reality, I think we'll still have a surplus. I feel like I have estimated revenues very conservatively, but I really want to have a nice surplus this year.
Mr. Doherty, our last meeting that we had with the budget, you were very concerned about adding one position to our parks, not parks, I apologize, to our Public Works Department.
It wasn't because of the revenue, it was because I had other departments asking for personnel as well and I, I did not want to show favoritism, I did not want to show, "Well, I'm doing this for you and not for you" and, you know, I'm sure you could have...
There's no favoritism in running a city, though.
I'm sure you could have every department head come up to you and say, "Hey, I need more help." And, and yes, they do.
Right.
But, you know, we're, that is a decision that was made, not out of trying to cut, I know they need help, I know, but at the same time, we're so much further along than we were just a year and a half ago, it's night and day and we're getting there. And when, when people say, "I'm not wanting to hire," we've hired 22 positions in the last two years. So I mean, it's not that I'm not wanting to expand, I do, but it's, I don't want to, I want to do it at a pace that goes with our revenue. I did not ask for an increase in property taxes. I think that's going to come on its own, I think sales tax is going to come on its own, I think we're going to have a very healthy growth, but that does not say we're not going to have a few growing pains along the way. And I don't mean to put that as a growing pain, but I look at it as a growing pain. But I'm willing to put that position in and the other position you wanted, I think if, you know, you take the 72, what was the other one again? You said part, you wanted a part-time?
Forty-four.
I'm sorry?
Grants writer at 46. That was just what was left over if you took the 118, but we could see what a grants writer costs.
I think we can, you know, we put in the, if you want me to put in the city planner assistant, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm okay to do that. I mean, it's on the paper, we're showing, that I'm sending to the controller, it shows us being in the red about $20,000, somewhere in that neighborhood. I may have found, I mean, I've done the May numbers and I probably have found that, so, but it's just, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I feel, I feel like we've had three weeks to discuss this and it's crickets. And, you know, when we're in front of everybody publicly, it's brought up and I think it needs more time and that's my opinion and I'll stick with it. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Well, with all due respect, it's not crickets. I've been asking for a return on this investment for a long time and we also had big storms two weeks ago and I've spent a lot of time visiting with people in the city. And I'm not trying to blindside anybody, but this has been something that's come up. A lot of people who are probably watching have asked about this. I know that it's a big question and when we're not seeing anything coming out in any way of a report, anything written, anything to show where the worth is, and if there's some things that are coming up, that would be great for us to know, but right now, there hasn't been anything. And again, none of this is personal, but when we look at what our immediate needs are and to the point that Commissioner Bufalini made, we were scraping to try to figure out how to get another Public Works person in the last meeting. So when I thought of this, I certainly did a lot of math and sat down and considered, but I was going with what was said in that last meeting when I brought it into what we're talking about tonight. And it's not an attempt to blindside anybody, but this is our budget and looking at the city, I don't think anybody could be surprised that somebody might draw this conclusion that where we need to direct the tax dollars is towards the places where the work is needed right now. So I certainly didn't intend to blindside anybody. I do appreciate all the work that you do on the budget and all the work that you do otherwise, you and I have talked about other things coming up as well. But it was not something that came out of nowhere. I've been asking for months for actual data and a plan and so this is not out of nowhere.
I remember when you were looking for someone to hire as our city planner and it was pretty difficult. There are not a lot of people available with, you know, I was excited when you came across Ethan because I think, you know, we were, you were looking in places and trying to find someone to fill that position and it's just, you know, not easy to fill a position like that. So what I, I guess where I'm going, you know, Ethan's very talented and has learned a lot in a short amount of time and I believe he's doing a great job. Ethan, how would you feel about having to take the time away from what you're doing to train someone because that's what would have to happen, being an assistant?
At some point, wow, Keith, you turn me up a lot. At some point, you would have to do that. I mean, ultimately, our department will not say the size that it is today for the rest of time, it will get bigger and everything takes time, everything, it is, it is what it is, you know, when it comes down to it.
There's a big difference, I think, in the salary of an actual city planner than someone who's an assistant. And I just see that with the dollar amount that we're looking at, an assistant would have to be trained and that's, that is one thing that concerns me about putting an assistant in is you would have to take time away from the 19 developments that you're working on right now to train someone. Do you think that would be a fair statement?
That is a fair statement, Mayor.
Also, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna circle back around to, and this has nothing to do with a person or anything, this has to do with an economic development department. We, let's go back to 19 developments and all of the people that we will be bringing into the community and rooftops bringing into the community. We're also looking at with... these rooftops, this amount of people, I mean, our current economic development officer, and I probably go to about I want to say six to eight meetings a week having to do with Williamson, Inc., Franklin Tomorrow, Franklin Forward, healthcare development, and they are looking at Fairview. Because we don't have healthcare out here to speak of as far as a hospital. We've had hospitals looking at us, but the direction an economic development department brings and what, what benefit they bring to the community is that they bring, they, they contact and get contacted by companies, and we want to be able to control that. And I don't know who, you're, Tom, you're busy. Our planning department is obviously overworked, so I don't know where the potential businesses that are looking at our community, I don't, I don't know who they're gonna go to to get the information that I know our economic development officer fields every single day. Fields their questions, tells them about our community, tells them about our population, tells them, you know, what we have to offer, but also brings in good quality business and good quality development to our community. So I, I just see that as essential, and it hasn't been, we haven't had this position long enough, in my opinion, to make a determination that it's not to the benefit of our community. I think it needs time. If, you know, if we don't see, like you said, if we don't see that happen within a year, it's not even been around, the, the department has not even been around a year, then maybe that's another conversation, but I'm, I'm just not on board with doing away with it totally, because I really believe with the way our community's growing, we need some good direction.
Mayor.
Yes.
What exactly does Williamson, Inc. do for the city of Fairview?
They
Or for, for Williamson County?
They provide us with, it's like a chamber of commerce, where we can collaborate, meet and mingle with all the different businesses that are regionally across middle Tennessee.
Okay. Now, all, all, most of the board, we go to a lot of the Williamson, Inc. meetings. We go to these other meetings that you addressed earlier. Not all of us can, you know, attend six-plus meetings a week. And so, so I, I do feel that Williamson, Inc. does a lot of this position for William, for Williamson County, for Fairview, and I do feel that the economic officer, the development, development officer is very engulfed in that. And I do appreciate the, what that position has done for the city of Fairview. I think also, Mr. Doherty, you're, you're saying that you'd be able to find the funds to add to additional positions and keep this position as economic officer development, development officer? Is there also an option for the economic department to be more of a part-time position? I'm just throwing things out there. I think that was a couple of questions all lumped into one.
Well, you, you were involved in the economic development process. We had a panel, and we, we had interviews. I think I think the biggest thing for me is, to answer your first question, is I can put an assistant planner in the budget. I feel like we can support that. I can't put that and three more firemen and another police officer and, and, and on and on and on. But, you know, my whole deal is from a city manager standpoint, we I'm looking to maintain what we've built and then grow and then hit the gas again once, once revenue is really forward, which I believe we're right on the cusp of. I would feel fine putting that position into the budget. I can also look at the final revenue numbers. I think we would probably, I don't know if we could totally absorb it, but it would be going into our fund balance at a minimal amount. I would like to see a year to be able to provide the board with substantial data of what monies have been brought in by the economic development position, what value it brings, and if at the end of that, we can, we can have work sessions, and we, if y'all, if y'all want to do something different, that's, that is, that is, I will entertain that, but I personally feel 100% that this is in the best interest of the city. If, if, if you don't see the value, I would like, I'm just asking for more time, is all I'm asking for.
Okay. I have a follow-up question to that. You're in charge of the entire city. You know your personnel, what they're doing. Do you know what our economic officer, development officer, is doing on a day-to-day basis? And do you understand if she is or isn't, or they are or aren't bringing in any revenue? Do you know right now, you, so this position's been in place for a year now?
A little over.
Little over a year.
She's very active, very active, and we've got some exciting things coming up for a lot of the reasons we can't bring up names is because for competition, you know, things fall through. If, if people know something's looking at something, then, you know, here comes competitors. But we, it's very, you can't, you can't say a lot until it happens. But I'm excited about a couple of pretty big opportunities the city has that have the economic development officers can probably take 99% of the credit if, if, if they come through.
So as of right now, there's no contracts in place or any, or any promises? It's just conversation?
It's pretty serious conversation, yes.
Like, no contracts, no nothing like that, just conversation?
Mayor. Mr. Doherty, as I mentioned before, I went into my thought process for this with information that we had after our last conversation. And I can hear the sincerity and, and the persistence that there are things coming out of this position. And my desire isn't to cut the economic development position, but when I'm looking at the city and what's happening, the immediate needs are really surfacing there, and, and I have had concerns, I've mentioned to everybody through this forum here, that we're not seeing a plan. And you're asking for a year, and I would say that I would be willing to go six months to at least see a plan, some of the things that I've requested. When, when you just look at the position description, or you look at what an economic development officer does, there are things that can be shared very openly that have nothing to do with someone who may or may not bring their business here. Has nothing to do with anything that would be behind the scenes. It's an outward-facing showing. If I asked you what you've done and to show me the results of it, or if I ask the city attorney or any of the other departments, I feel like I get a much more clear answer, and I think part of that is because of the expectation that there be clear answers. And the other part is that I'm not really sure that this is a really well-defined role, which is why I was thinking, pare it down to something much more focused, ramp it back up later when we actually are going to need it. We have a lot of businesses here. I don't have this information in front of me, but we've only had this position since February of 2024. So, so we're leaning into that argument, saying it hasn't been here long enough to produce results. But what I would like to know is how many of the companies that are here were here before February 2024? So we already had them coming. So what, what has been the outcome and the result? And again, I'm not against an economic development officer. I am for a grant writer and for the Planning and Codes Department, and then for us to revisit the economic development officer at a more opportune time, unless something could be proven to this board in the next several months about what is actually happening and the benefit to the city. And, and I, and I lean on you as the city manager to produce that. And, and I believe you. I'm listening to you. I'm appreciative of this conversation, but I, I really want to make sure that I'm being heard.
Yes, I, I hear you loud and clear, and I, I appreciate the willingness to, to, to let this play out a little bit. I think within six months, we can at least share in, if not the details or the exact companies, some of the things that are going on. And I'm, I'm more than willing to put, put that position in. And I'd love to put some more positions in at the amended budget. I'm hoping things we do need to move forward, and, and it's not getting, it's not getting any slower for anybody. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate allowing us to look at it in six months, and that's, that gives, that gives ample time to, I believe, get the board what they want.
Mr. Greer, what do you see an assistant planner, what do you see their responsibilities being? Helping getting permits out faster?
They would be reviewing development plans and items that come before the planning commission to make sure that all of the regulations and rules are followed by those developments with all of their documents. They would also be assisting with our GIS map, updating that, and then functionally reviewing building permits, reviewing code complaints along with everyone, our staff.
The flooding issues that we've had recently, is there anything that the city can do about that?
That is a very loaded question, Mayor. There are some areas of town
Would cover, and that seems to be a topic of interest, so I just wonder if the city can even get involved in any of that.
There are some areas of town that the city still has some say in how things are handled. There are some areas of town that have been the way that they are for 20 years, and there's some areas of town that have been the way that they are since 1959, when the city of Fairview was incorporated. There is where the city still has say and still can change the items of construction and of development. We're evaluating those measures that are currently in place and evaluating them post our storm event to see if anything needs to change and how we can change those items.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
It's a fun conversation, so it's difficult, right, because we, we're not a, a city of so big that this is all just numbers on paper, right? We know who fills every single position that the city has. Most of us know everybody on a personal level, so I do commend Commissioner Roberts for saying this is not about an individual, because I agree, it's not. I think if we sit back, redact all of the personal information, redact anything about Fairview, and you just gave the understanding of where the city's at in the documents, as far as what money is being spent where and here and there, and what's going on in the city, and how much development is happening, I think anybody would come to a logical conclusion that the planning commission could use, or planning commission, the planning department could use some, some help. I, I, I'm not sure what the argument is that that we don't need an assistant planner. Now, we can talk about whether that's more valuable in this immediate need than an economic, economic development officer, but the I, I just, the need for, for an assistant planner, I think, is evident at this point. Regarding the economic development position, to Commissioner Roberts' point as well, you know, there are things where I, I totally understand that there's certain things you're just not gonna talk about until the cake is in the oven, because it's, could be, you can derail the whole thing. But you know, when I, when I think of an economic development position, and what, what I envision it being, is that identifying needs within our community. These are the things that we need to focus on. We need this, we need that, we need, you know, medical, you've, you've mentioned, we, whatever it might be. You know, I think when you have a broad or, or lack of direction for that position, you get into, you get into an area where literally any business that comes to Fairview, I did it. You know what I mean? Like, there's no, there's no intent for that particular bit. We did, there was no discussion, hey, for the last 16 months, we've been talking about needing a business just like that. So I, you know, we set our economic development officer out to do it, and they did it. And I think that you can draw a very straight, dark line, saying that they, they added this value, right? When it's broad, and this is no fault of our current economic development officer or, or whatever, I'm not putting blame on an individual. I'm just simply saying, moving forward, if you're asking for time, I think it's valid, to Commissioner Roberts' point, that there needs to be some sort of goals or some sort of direction laid out, that this is where we're headed. These are the needs that we've identified within Fairview that we feel are the, the most immediate, that need to be filled. And these are, you know, I don't care if we're talking this, I don't care to know specific businesses, but I think it's valuable to know that we are having discussions with companies in this, in this area of expertise, or whatever it might be, that could fill the need that our community has. I think when it's left to just, you know, be whatever it may be, in defense of our economic development officer, it would be, it would behoove her to have that in place to say, I've done this. I went out and I did this, right? When there's no direction, it, it, it will always open that conversation up to criticism, regardless of whether she was or was not involved in it, and that is something I would like to see change within that department. I know we're getting way outside of budget conversation right now, but I think clearly defined expectations and or goals, or whatever it might be that that individual is working towards. I think if that's defined, it avoids conversations like this in the future. That's all I have.
Yes. We will take a five-minute recess and reconvene at 8:33. Back to our program in progress. More discussion on fiscal year budget 2025-26.
I'm not sure if there are any more, were you gonna, I would just like to make a motion to amend the budget if I can. I think that we've had our, has it, does anybody else have anything to say about that? Okay, then may I make a motion to amend the proposed budget to add the line for an assistant city planner at the salary of $72,000?
If I may, Commissioner, that amendment should also reflect that the corresponding amount be removed from fund balance to compensate for the difference, so we send a balanced budget. So it would be add the assistant city planner at the amount of $72,000 and take a corresponding adjustment to fund balance for that amount.
Correct.
So yes, I'd like to make that motion, please.
And where's the money gonna come from?
We have approximately $50,000 in surplus with, with with the revenue over expenditures, and then we'll have, we've got 2.8 million in fund balance. We're gonna take 20,000 out of the fund balance to balance the budget. 20,000 out of the 2.8.
So we're gonna go from 80,000 in the black to 20,000 in the red?
Correct.
50 to 60 in the black, correct?
No, it was 80, wasn't it? That's what you said last meeting.
Well, that was prior to the public works position.
So we're more in the red?
No, it's, we were like 50 to 60,000 in the black with the public works and then adding the 72. All we need to say is that how we balance the budget is we're using fund balance to balance the budget.
Mr. Dougherty, is there any concern about doing this that you have when it comes to having a good budget to put forth to the state?
No.
Thank you. So I'd like to renew my motion, please.
I need to ask a question. Do we not need to research, nothing against the 72,000, but do we not need to research if that's an appropriate amount to pay an assistant city planner? And the education required for that person? I'm just, wouldn't that what we're putting in the budget for it? But I mean, where do we come up?
If I may, it's a budgeted amount, which doesn't mean we have to spend that total amount. We have that conversation a lot when we talk about putting something into the budget. But I got this position directly out of the documents that the city manager, Mr. Dougherty, gave to us that state what kind of positions there are available and what the salaries are for them. So if you look at page 23 of our packet, there is an assistant planner under planning and codes, and the base salary for that is $71,259.91 on the low end of the spectrum. And on the high end, it goes up to $107,787. So in my proposition for the conversation, I just rounded up to $72,000 just to cover it. That's the lowest, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I mean, I've read the budget and I was just thinking, are we, is that good?
Ethan and I have scrubbed this number, but I mean, I'm sure you can look other places and find different numbers, but that, we both felt comfortable with this, that felt like you could get a competent person.
Okay, it was just, I've read, I've read the budget and I understand the numbers. I just feel like that's the, like, the bottom, the bottom of, the bottom of the range. And if you're comfortable with thinking that you can find somebody for, you know, that amount with the education, I guess, that they'd be required, that was my question. Okay.
So with this-
Point of order, there's a motion with no second.
Can we restate the motion, please?
The motion to add to the current proposed budget, a city planner, an assistant city planner position with a salary, a budgeted salary of $72,000 with the excess coming out of the, I'm sorry, the fund balance.
Mayor?
Yes.
So with this amended budget, we're still, we're not eliminating the economic development officer position, correct?
Correct. I'm going to give, we're going to give you reports between now and six months, then we'll readdress it.
So you say between now and six months, is it in six months or will we get it regularly? Or, I'm just clarification.
If you want something regularly, we'll get you something regularly. We'll try to revamp the quarterly meetings that we have set up already and I'm gonna, we'll, I'll sit down with the economic development officer and we'll come up with things that I feel like y'all really want to know and try to do it in a way that also is protective of folks we're working with. And we'll, I guess that's for another meeting. Think about it, email me if there's anything you want to know or on a particular timeframe you want to know, I'm willing to work with you on that. I'm just-
So do you feel that six months is proper time to make an evaluation?
I think it is better than the second, yes. I feel like, I feel like six months will give us opportunity to get to the board, the information that hopefully will show the value and the worth of the position.
Right. And this goes back to months ago when we were working on the other amended budget for last year, for this past year, just going over employee evaluations and just doing either monthly, yearly, quarterly, whatever it is, just, I think something like that would help in this position as well, keeping us from here, just knowing more about the employees and, you know, how they're doing, what they're doing, what they deserve, what they don't, you know, I don't know, I'm just saying, you know, it's just another idea.
Yes, and I've talked with Commissioner Roberts about this and we're open to that and we, we were looking at the proper format and the proper, what we're wanting to get out of it. I think we want to have a goal-oriented system, but also something that's, we want to be careful on who's doing the evaluating and just make sure we're, it doesn't become a distraction. It's a tool and we want it to help the performance and not hinder it.
Right. I appreciate that. I have one more follow-up question, really quick, I'm sorry. So this new position will be publicized, will be recruited, whatever we're going to do for that. Is there an option for someone within the Planning Department currently to move forward into that position? Or are we looking for outside?
I'm pretty sure this is going to be on the outside. I will talk with Ethan about that. I'm not sure that there's anybody on his staff that has exactly the qualification he's looking for in that, but it's, I don't, I mean, anybody is welcome to apply. It doesn't mean they're going to get the job, so, but, you know, we won't tell somebody that can't apply.
Agreed. Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to, a little update for the board. Back when we had that conversation about staff evaluations, I said I would draft up something. So I want everyone to know I have, in fact, done that and Mr. Dougherty and I have had a conversation, actually have the document ready to send to you for your eyes and then the department heads to look at also. So we're making progress on that and that should be coming up in time for the strategy meeting that we have scheduled in August. But I'll have it to you probably tomorrow to review. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second. Ms. Jones, for the amended motion.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
We still have to now vote on the actual item, right?
Right.
Yeah. And just, I just want to speak to making what seems like a rather abrupt adjustment to the budget. We've discussed it on a handful of different occasions. It's not, it's a dollar amount that's being added to the budget. It's not being spent today. I would imagine that this position is going to take some time to find, to go through the interview process, collect resumes and do all that. So that's why I voted yes for it. I feel like we have time to, we'll be, we'll be, we'll be in, into fiscal year 26 by a decent margin, I would imagine, before anybody is being offered this position, if I had to guess. If I'm looking back on other significant hires that the city has done, they usually take some time. Would that be fair to say?
Yes, it just depends on-
Sure, I mean, it could happen quick, but-
Supply and demand.
Right. But anyway, yeah, that's all I wanted to say, add.
Now we need to vote on the original motion for this item. Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 11, New Business A, Resolution 30-25, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by, Fairview, Tennessee, by owner consent with RS40, single-family residential zoning, and approving a plan of service, Old Cox Pike, 53.162 plus or minus acres, map 043, parcels 015.00052.00053.00. Mr. Greer?
This annexation is contiguous with the city of Fairview. It touches all of Pinecrest subdivision, is along Cox Pike and Dice Lamplie. This comes to the Board of Commissioners with a seven yes, positive recommendation. One PC member voted no and one was absent. So I received a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission. The expressed interest from the property owner is to have this rezoned to R20 and build a subdivision on this property. It is within the urban growth boundary and, like I said, contiguous with the city. Water Authority has provided a letter to this property that if annexed and the development plan is approved, that water and sewer service would be available.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Just like to remind everyone, this is calling for a public hearing, so this will be discussed again.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 11A passes 5-0. Item 12, Round Table, Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Mayor, can I have one quick moment, just to give a quick update? The sidewalk project and the Cumberland-Crocut intersection, that project was let by TDOT on May 9th. The apparent low bidder was Eubank Asphalt Paving and Ceiling. It's for the construction of pedestrian facilities on State Route 100 from the Fairview Community Center, the rec center, to Bowie Lake Road, including intersection improvements at Cumberland Drive. The project length is 2.527 miles and they have a posted completion date of on or before July 31st, 2026. They are currently working through a contract with Eubank's Asphalt and Paving for a total bid amount of $6,987,980.90. So just wanted to provide a quick update of where that project stood. And I'm sure most of you have seen Piedmont Natural Gas moving natural gas lines along Highway 100 and all the wonderful traffic that that has brought into the town. Water Authority will be moving their water and sewer lines as well, so you will see those happening in the coming weeks or to coming months. And then TDOT will begin work out there. It is not going to be a fun next 12, 13, 14, 18, 24 months, but it will be much better in the future, once our red light is in there and then we have a pedestrian connection for most of our pedestrian walkers that don't have a sidewalk today.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ethan, can you clarify the work that would be done at the Cumberland-Crocut 100 intersection?
That intersection is receiving a left-hand turn lane on Highway 100 to turn onto Crocut, a left-hand turn lane on Highway 100 to turn onto Cumberland, and that will be a signalized intersection with a four-way traffic signal.
In this timeframe?
In this timeframe, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, just as I always do, thank all the city employees and for the jobs that they do. I would like to, didn't speak on this a minute ago, but I would like to add that in the economic development area, I think we, the citizens, the first thing, other than the medical, the first thing out of their mouth is restaurants, hotel, and I think the cities, the city would all benefit from that. And I do know that I've been contacted by the Economic Developer Director that owned some properties that I dealt with in the past that possibly might have availability for some of this. And I understand, you know, the possibility of not being able to make it public, but hopefully in the near future, some of it can be made public. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Board. Thank you, everyone who's here and who's listening. I just want to send one more reminder that tomorrow is the deadline to apply for the three boards that have open seats to serve the city. So if you're watching this and you feel like you want to be invested and involved, then you have an opportunity to apply. The deadline is tomorrow, June 6th. So please reach out to any of us on the Board of Commissioners or to any of the sitting members of those boards if you have questions about the involvement. But if you're interested in any of the topics about parks and landscape or about the Planning Commission, or if you have a yen for zoning appeals, then there's an opportunity for you to serve the city. So I just wanted to send one more reminder about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Thank you, Mayor. To reiterate what everyone else is saying, thank you for everybody for being here. Thank you for everyone who participated in our workshop, or what were we going to call it, workshop, right, that we had last week? Oh, sorry. I'm having a town hall, thank you. Wow, I'm having a moment. So thank you for everyone who participated in the town hall. We heard you, we're listening to you, you know, and by adding another position in our Planning Department, I think that it's not going to rectify things, but it will help move things along. Couple of things, I'm glad that we were able to, as of right now, save a position. I think, I think that's great. So thank you very much to the Board for doing what we're doing right now. Thank you for the, to all the 29 sponsors and vendors that are coming out to the July 3rd event. It's going to be amazing. I got family coming in from, from three different states that are going to be here that are coming specifically for that, because they weren't going to come until after that, but they're coming for our July 3rd event. Also, the fishing rodeo, once again, is this Saturday. And I had a quick question about the fishing rodeo. I know that everyone is allowed to fish for free that day in the state of Tennessee. However, the fishing rodeo is only for ages-
Up to 16.
Up to 16, so 16 and younger than that. So adults will not be able to participate in that lake at that time until after, correct?
That's correct. It will open up to the public at noon.
Right. And as of right now, until Saturday, there is no fishing at all in that lake.
No fishing.
Correct. Thank you. That's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Good discussion, Board and staff, thank you for entertaining all of the questions and hypotheticals and hoops that we provided for you to jump through. Mr. Dougherty, you especially. Finally getting warm out there, just keep an eye out for children. If someone with little children, I'm always mindful of the people racing up and down the road, so just keep an eye out for them. As a heads up to the citizens and to this Board, I will not be in attendance for our next VOC meeting. I will be going to visit family and I can't say why, because someone might be watching that shouldn't know why we're coming up there, so. But, but yeah, so I won't be here for the next meeting, so apologies for that. That's all I have.
Mayor, I apologize. I should have asked about this sooner. The July 1st- Um, the July 1st meeting that we have coming up, I was wondering if, for the sake of the, the pressure on the city staff and, um, and travel schedules, perhaps we might either cancel the July 1st meeting, or perhaps schedule the meeting, a meeting like the last week in June, so that perhaps if everyone on the BOC is available, we could have it on that Tuesday or Thursday that week, and then we can go ahead and move the June 17th meeting to that next, if this is okay, um, with the staff and with the BOC, and then remove the 17th and the 1st.
So you want to move the June 17th and the July 1st?
Well, when we first set the schedule a long time ago, I remember us deliberating whether we even wanted to have the July 1st meeting, and I think I was the one who was pressing for it back then. And so, um, now that we're a little bit closer, I wanted to just mention the possibility of not having it. When I think about the amount of effort that's going into the July 3rd celebration, two days later for the staff, uh, and the reality of that, I just wanted to mention perhaps we can move that one, and we could have it the following week. It's not like we have to cancel meetings if everyone will be around, but I wanted to bring this up. And I'd like to have Commissioner McDonald, I mean Vice Mayor McDonald here, if we can move that meeting. I know it's inconvenient to move meetings a lot, but thought I would just ask.
I, I just think it, unsolicited, uh, opinion, I, I just think it needs to be a motion, because we're talking about a published, uh, meeting schedule, so I, I just think that needs to be something that's voted on and approved if we start, um...
Yeah. I just don't know what the motion would be right now.
So, one other thing to note, is this resolution that you just passed tonight for annexation, scheduled a public hearing and a second read for the July 1st meeting, so it would also need to change the date for that, and any other thing that was scheduled for the 17th?
I mean, well, anyway, go ahead.
Well, just as another point, I, and for Commissioner Roberts and McDonald, it, it's totally normal for a Commissioner to miss a meeting here or there. I mean, that's every jurisdiction, and people have things outside of purely city business, and, and I think most constituents understand that, so it's, it's not abnormal for someone to miss a meeting. It's commendable that you want to make everyone, and, uh, I think that's great, but I, I don't think you should feel bad if you, if you miss a meeting here or there, as long as there's a quorum, the city can still conduct business. Uh, if there's something that's particularly pressing on the agenda that you feel like you need to be heard on, I'm sure that your, your fellow Board members would defer it if, if, you know, we had that discussion ahead of time, but I, I just wanted to throw that out there, too. It's commendable, but...
Thank you. Well, really, I was more concerned about the staff for July 1st, for that Tuesday, just thinking about that.
So are you wanting to move the 17th to the 24th?
Mayor, we, we don't need to move it on my behalf. I, I, I'm just saying, if it's going to make a hassle, which it seems like it might, and I'd like to hear from Ethan on, or, sorry, Mr. Greer, on where he stands in regards to everything going on in his department, that I know you probably have to move things around more than anybody. Plus we set...
Notices and the, uh, cost of those is the major.
The 17th, uh, those notices have already been sent out for items that are on that agenda. Uh, the July 1st, we did pass one item tonight that would appear, item 11A, Resolution 3025, calling for a public hearing, and that public hearing is called for on July 1st. Outside of that, those are the only items that I have for the July 1st meeting at this time.
The only, the only thing that I would like to see is that the whole Board be here when we bring somebody on to the different boards that we're looking at, and that also falls on 17th. That's just my opinion. I just think the whole Board should weigh in on that.
If you, if the Board chooses, we could schedule that for the second meeting of July. It will just put the members short a meeting, they just won't make them have a full Board for Planning Commission or Parks and Landscape. They would be short members, because the current terms expire the, the 30th. So if we didn't put in new ones by the 30th of June, then their July meeting would be short if we moved that.
Well, I mean, they're an advisory board, uh, not that, it's not important, it's just they're an advisory board.
I'm, I'm speaking of the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission would have six members still, which would constitute a quorum, so they could conduct business.
I just, I would rather the whole Board weigh in on who's going to serve on important boards like that.
That, that goes for Commission as well? For Board of Commissioners as well?
They're voted on by the...
I'm ju- I'm just saying, so, nevermind, nevermind.
They're not, they're not, um, Board of Commissioners are not, are not appointed by us, um, but these other Boards are.
Well, they are if there's an empty seat.
Okay, I mean...
I'm just saying, just...
That doesn't have anything to do with...
Correct.
With the Boards that are being voted on coming up. Um, I think I'm a little confused.
Basically, I can add that to the agenda whenever the Board chooses, and let all the applicants know the date, if you decide on the date.
So we just, are we wanting to move July 1st, or are we wanting to just cancel July 1st? Okay, so, so, um, Mr. Hogan, help us out here. Since we're at the end of the meeting in Round Table, how do we handle this since we need to look at, um, the cost? If, if we wait till tomorrow, it's another $1,000, right?
And, help me understand your question, if to...
So if we don't make the decision tonight, and it goes past tomorrow, we're in for another $1,000 for, uh...
We would, we would need to make public notification and have things submitted to, uh, the Tennessee and for newspaper circulation, uh, believe by tomorrow at noon, is that correct, Rachel?
If we're not going to have the July 1st meeting, we would just need to pick a, we would need to reschedule this public hearing for the second meeting of July, and then we wouldn't advertise it.
Can I, can I just try to clean up? I think there's multiple things, so, June 17th meeting, we have something that's already been noticed? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if we move that... I think we just keep June 17th where it is.
Yeah, I think June 17th is fine, as long as, I was just saying, I feel like we need a full Board, we can move the appointment of the c- open seats, instead of moving that whole meeting.
Yeah, that would just be a change to the agenda, that, that wouldn't...
Okay.
That'll, that notice hasn't gone out yet.
All right, okay, so that handles that, and then the other is, um, voting, how, how to handle voting to, so that we don't incur $1,000 extra fee for the notifications, um, to cancel the July 1st meeting.
Which would be item 11A on tonight's agenda for their public hearing? I'm just, I'm kind of going through my Roberts rule of cheat sheet right now. You guys are pushing me to my...
Cheat sheet. Yeah, we haven't closed it yet.
Yeah, the, the meeting's still open. I think the Board can still take up new business with a properly acknowledged motion. The... I don't think we need to rescind it. I think we just need to, uh, motion to amend something to previously adopted resolution to change the date to whatever we want that date to be. So, wha- what was the resolution number? Yes, sir.
30-25.
11A. Yeah, it's 11A.
So I, I think you're looking at a motion to amend the previously adopted, uh, resolution approved in item 11A to change the date from July 1st to whatever the date you want it to be.
Motion.
Second.
And, and what will that next date be? To July 17th.
And we need to vote on canceling July 1st.
I think that would be a separate motion.
Yes. Okay, so do y'all want me to make a motion, or does somebody...
I think there's a motion and a second to amend.
Um, for both?
Uh, I think we need to vote on amending 11A.
Vote on one and then the other. Okay, so we'll vote on, um, the, um, moving the, um, public hearing to the 17th of July. And did we get a second on that?
Making it easy on you.
Yes. Okay, all right, so we have first and a second. Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Now, would somebody like to make a motion to cancel July 1st?
Motion to cancel the, the July 1st BOC meeting.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
So, have you been able to talk yet? Oh, it's just me? Oh, shoot, and I don't have a long list tonight. Well, okay. Thank you to everyone involved with, um, working on the budget. Ben, Tom, just, um, appreciate all your hard work. And also, um, just to mention that, um, we are now, even though we have, um, an assessment done by Williamson County on our property and the value of it, which, you know, we all know has gone up quite a bit, um, we have, um, back, backed off our, uh, tax to revenue neutral, and the number on that is .5904, which is the certified tax rate. So, what that does mean is you might see an increase, um, if you've bought a house recently, you may not, because since we went, it was 25% above, and now it's, uh, back to revenue neutral, you may find that you may stay even or a little bit below. Some of us who have had houses for, you know, 15, 20 years, you're going to see that, um, you've got a, a pretty big increase, which gives you a, you know, a greater value on your home, but, um, you might see somewhat of an increase, but what, um, we worked hard to, you know, financially have a good budget so that our community will be able to see the, um, revenue neutral instead of an increase, and I just want to point out that we are only, there's only two cities in Williamson County that did that, and it's us and Brentwood. So that is something really good that we've done for our community and our citizens to, um, back, back that off, back to neutral. So I'm glad that, um, Tom, thank you for putting that in the budget, that's, um, really good for our citizens. And I think that's all I've got, so let's just, um, please keep Fairview beautiful and pick up trash and don't litter. Thank you. Do I, I have a motion to adjourn.